Order the Tuesday, May 7, 2024 Flagler County School Board Workshop. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous spights? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare and the whistling gurgles through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
May you please be seated. Okay, roll call.
Sharon Masaro.
Kristi Chung.
Will Furry.
Will Shaka-Moore.
Sally Hunt.
Okay, and so do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I do request that we move 10.01 after public comment.
Okay.
As well as 12.01 at the end of Finance Section 7. So if we could move that after 7.09, please.
Okay. All right, we'll make those changes. So we will now move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment today?
No, nobody signed up.
Okay, is there anybody would like to come forward now to make public comment? Seeing none approach, we will close public comment, and we will move on to Finance Consent.
10.01.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward, Mr. Willihan and Mr. Jonathan Lord. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Moore. Today I meet with Mr. Jonathan Lord on a renewal of the statewide mutual aid agreement that has not been updated since 2018. So Mr. Lord is going to explain what we have before us and a resolution as well.
Thank you, thank you all for having me, and I think I appreciate it. Let me say before I even go into this, I can truly appreciate the great partnership that the school board and the county have, especially when it comes to disasters. A lot of my peers don't have the same relationship that we have in our community, and it really means a lot to me that we have such a great relationship between both governments and the fact that our community comes together so well in a disaster, which leads me to this actual agreement. So the state, this is somewhat unique to Florida, but the state of Florida has something called a statewide mutual aid agreement, which is what this document is, where during times of disaster, if our community needs assistance, including the school district or another, we can request assistance and get it from other communities throughout the state of Florida, and also in the inverse, if another community needs assistance, we can send assistance. In many other states in the nation, those kinds of agreements happen one-on-one, where one county signs an agreement with another county, a school district signs an agreement with another school district. Florida, many, many years ago, actually in the 90s after Hurricane Andrew, said that's not the most effective way of doing it. So we actually have a statewide mutual aid agreement with all county governments sign onto it, most municipalities, special districts, school districts, and even some of those regional governments, like the water management districts, things like that. So the last time I was here was 2018, where we signed the first version of that that had been updated in probably a decade and a half before that was the last time it was updated. This, there has been a new update to this since 2018. It was mostly clarifying language. The process hasn't changed, other than there's some clarifying language in there about what systems to use to request assistance and receive reimbursement. So a very good example for you all would be is if another school district is heavily damaged after a storm, like somewhere in Adalia, they may request support from your facilities teams or other counties, school district staff to go provide that assistance. This agreement allows you to be reimbursed for sending that kind of assistance, or in the inverse, if we're heavily damaged here and they need to send, whether it's teaching staff, facility staff, or anything else like that, that you could then reimburse them for that expense for sending that assistance. A lot of times, once you're a signatory of this, the state just picks up the tab anyway, but the agreement is meant that the recipient reimburses the sending agency. Ninety-nine percent of the time in a statewide disaster, the state just pays the tab and reimburses the sending agency anyway. So this agreement allows that to occur, kind of enumerates the different requirements to do so. They, one of the big things they changed in here, they have a new financial system that the agreement requires that we all use to provide that assistance. Even between the county government and the school district, we could potentially use this to provide each other assistance as well. The most likely thing we typically ask of you all is to provide shelters, and we actually have a separate agreement specific to that, so we don't actually need that in this scenario. But anything else outside of that, if our facility staff would help your facility staff because one of your buildings was damaged, or vice versa, this would allow the two parties to reimburse each other for that expense, even on that smaller scale to a statewide scale.
Very good. Any questions?
So this will be going before you at the 6 o'clock meeting, and there will be the resolution as well as the document through the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management.
And just as you're ordered to, just by signing, there's no commitment that you provide assistance. It's just saying that you're a signatory of it, and should you be willing to provide that assistance to another community or district, and then that outlines the process to recruit those expenses.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to number seven, Finance Consent. First one is Imagine Financials. Ms. Womack.
Ms. Womack, Chairman Furry, Board members, and Superintendent Moore. We are going to answer any questions on Finance Consent.
Okay. So under Financial Consent, first item is 7.01, Imagine Charter School Financials. Any questions regarding the financials for Imagine?
No, Patty, when they get, they actually spend out their accounts, their company picks up the difference, so they have a zero balance when it's all over, correct?
They're left with $1.
$1, correct, $1. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to 7.02. These are approval of purchase orders over $10,000.
So for Weiss and Sirota, is that like two different time periods? Because I see that there's two charges.
Yes, we had to pull a second PO for them, and I actually have the legal expenses on So I will talk to you then. They're monthly invoices, so two were probably paid within that time period.
Any other questions?
That was the only one.
Okay, then we will move on. Vendor, approval of vendor payment. Okay, approval of deletion of inventory. Then we'll move on to 7.05, Financial Budget Amendments. Any questions or comments? Forward.
I just have a question. When the kids go to states, does the state reimburse anything, or we cover it?
Is this for athletics?
Yeah.
The district covers states for all the schools.
Okay, so that's the way it works, yeah. No reimbursement, no.
Okay, and we'll move on to 7.06, Board Approval of Professional Development Travel. No questions, we will move forward to 7.07, Request Board Approval for District Financial Statement.
And there is the separate fee, yes. Separate attachment for legal fees. There's two pages on here, just to make sure you capture all the cost. This is as of last Friday. Sniff and Spellman's total is $14,176, and Weiss and Sirota, there's two different POs, one on the first page, one on the second. As of last Friday, it's $28,934.
They're adding up significantly, yep.
So is the, are these all district? So the sniff and spell is mostly district needs?
The sniff and spellment is anything that would go through our superintendent, and then Weiss and Sirota is the board needs.
Okay.
Including things that would come to the board as well, that, you know, clarification might be needed on.
Very good.
Patty, going back to the finance there, the general funds, when they meet and use 100%, this is March we're looking at, some of these you'll see or notice are already almost spent out their budget, it goes over budget. Does that come out of our general fund?
What page are you specifically talking about?
It would be just the first page I'm looking at.
Okay, so that's, the first page is all revenue?
No, this isn't that, fund revenue, where was I? I was looking at one I have here, and I just wrote down in my notes, what happens, and it can be a generic answer, when they max out their budgets, like say, whatever it is, they max out their budget, where's the excess data?
It would have to come from the, yes, it would have to come from the general fund.
It does come from the general fund.
But that's what the budget revisions are that you see every month. If something is needed, if costs increase, it's just happened for the custodial area, we had to add more money to get them through the rest of fiscal year.
Okay.
We try to have them plot out how much they need, so we're not continually adding money, and we can track it easier.
Does Medicaid ever catch up?
I just.
They're way back, so I was just curious.
I just signed, the piece that we're missing is the admin claiming that comes out of finance. Last week, I just signed the invoices for three quarters that I received and sent those back to be processed, and then we have the fourth one that we are getting ready to send them to get processed, that we just received last week. We normally get those after year-end, so I'm expecting either June, July, or August. Hopefully, they come before year-end.
That would be nice.
But they are, they are backlog.
Yeah, that would be nice, Laura, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to Financial and Federal Audit Reports.
I just want to note, this is our financial and federal audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. They audit all of the areas in finance, they do it by samples. What they're auditing is the annual financial report that is brought to you in September for approval, and for the financial piece, they had no audit findings that would change any of those numbers that were brought to you in September. So that is a very good thing. For the federal piece, they audited school food service as well as all the ESSER grants. There's tons of transactions that flow through all those grants, and there were no federal findings or any additional comments or even recommendations, which they sometimes do. So just a shout out to Angie Bush for school food service and Tammy Orr for the ESSER grants, which, as you know, is just a huge, huge lift.
That's good news. And then we have, any other questions regarding that? Okay, so we'll move on to 7.09, Receipt of the Attached Schedule Impact Fee Collection. Okay.
And this is just through the second quarter through December. As I had mentioned a couple at the last board meeting, these are two to three months in every year.
Yeah, and it's nice to see the change from last year. You can see the impact these are working to build the funds that you're going to need for building, so that's a big plus.
Okay, so any other questions regarding finance?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Patty is staying with us because we're going into 12.
I am staying, I am staying with you. I was just standing to welcome her to the table, so.
Now we'll welcome Sarah Consulting, John and Bob. Sarah, please come join us.
We will do their presentation first.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We've been giving the board updates.
Okay. Superintendent asked for us to give you just a very high-level review of what happened in the legislative session, and what I really want to focus on as we look at the agenda is kind of your legislative platform and what happened with it, and then just some very high-level things of some of the other legislative actions that occurred. So your platform that you adopted last year in September, we had three basic priorities. The superintendent had asked for an item to provide some additional flexibility as it related to teacher certifications, so that we could hire the people that we identified that we wanted to hire. The board adopted a legislative budget request for $1.6 million for a capital outlay project at the Flagler Technical College to add three additional classrooms and some ancillary rooms to that facility. And then the third thing that we asked for was a replacement of the capital outlay money that was being shared with the charter schools from the local property tax. The third item, the governor had a proposal inside of his recommended budget that would have addressed that item, but the legislature ultimately did not adopt that item. The other two items that we asked for were adopted in the deregulation portion of the deregulation package for public schools that was passed, and an item was adopted in the budget that assuming that the governor signs that item and doesn't veto it, we will get the $1.6 million for the capital outlay project sometime during the next fiscal year. So that was a very good outcome, and I put in here, because this is the second year that the formula has been changed, but every year that the formula remains the way it was adopted in 2022, we essentially see an additional $2.5 million in our base budget because of the actions that occurred in that previous year in the way that they did away with the DCD and replaced it with a comparative wage factor, where no district was below 1.0 in that ratio, and in doing so, that was worth about $2.5 million for the district recurring every year. So in looking at the statewide budget and what occurred there, I would just simply note that the increases that occurred locally were larger in the dollar amount per student increase and in the percentages than the overall statewide averages. And that occurred in the year after we had this major change to the formula, which was a significant rebasing. So statistically, we got that rebasing, and we stayed on the good side of average for the next year after that, which was important to us. It's basically like we solidified that change. That's the big outcome there. The statewide policy was 2.75% increase per student. When you look at the local funding, there's a $9.3 million increase to the total funding available for Flagler schools, but that's not just for Flagler schools, that includes also the vouchers and the charters. So when finance here brings you your actual budget, it won't be that much of an increase, but it should be in line with that percentage of 7.6% in general as far as total potential And again, the legislature did support the $1.6 million for Flagler Technical College. On the major legislation, I just want to point out four bills that passed that were kind of the comprehensive bills for the session. The first two were public school deregulation. Senator Hudson was a major player, particularly in Senate Bill 7002, in spearheading the Senate's efforts to provide additional deregulation of the public schools. These packages did pass, a number of things relating to teacher certification, a number of things regarding how you have to notice various activities that you were doing that cost money, so there should be some savings in a number of these changes that we will work on each one of them to try to capture those savings and have you plan and budget for the changes upfront, and not just sort of have them happen, but to be sort of focused on them upfront. With the school safety bill, the legislature has now adopted essentially everything that the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Commission has recommended to it. The major changes in here are going to involve how each individual school regulates its envelope, its perimeter, and we're going to have school safety coordinators at each location. There's also going to be a lot of data collecting at the state level, which is going to be what they use to do the safety audits of individual school sites. And then within the conforming bill to the education budget, there was some additional certification relief that was provided in here, and also a new program called the Gates Program, which is a dropout recovery program where we attempt to get those students that have dropped out into a career in technical education and get them a high school diploma at the same time, and it's essentially a scholarship program to cover their tuition for being in those types of programs. So that's another major outcome from this session. At the high level, that's what I wanted to leave you with, but essentially, you adopted a positive platform, and two of those three things happened outright. The third got some attention by the governor, and, you know, there's still a potential for movement in that area in the future, and we'll soon be looking forward towards your next positive legislative platform for the 2025 session. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sarah?
Gentlemen, how long have you been our representatives? Long time, I believe.
It was.
More than five years.
It was a sixth year.
Like six years, yeah.
Because we got hired.
The year that Jacob left.
Okay, yeah, okay, gotcha.
So, yeah, this might be a seventh year now, but, you know.
Okay, I thought it was a while.
Okay. This is my 31st year I heard Hurricane Andrew brought up. That was the second month that I was working was Hurricane Andrew, so.
Wow.
Been a little while.
Yeah, yeah, it has been.
See, in case, just for the public, just. See, in case, just for the public, just so in case they didn't know already, but John and Bob, Sarah are lobbyists. And this this session, we had a great experience up in Tallahassee. Thanks for arranging those meetings with Speaker Renner and with Senator Hudson. I really feel and your participation in them, I really feel that that FaceTime with them, both Vice Chair Chong and Dr. Conklin were in attendance on those meetings. And I think that was well received and it was very impactful. So thanks again for that effort.
Well, we look forward to many more years of that, so we can't wait to join you next year and grow together as we move forward in this process.
Very good.
And that's actually the second part of ten point zero one. This would typically be under superintendent action, but I do, I will be asking the board on May twenty-first to renew the contract with Sarah Brothers. They, as the chair knows, every week during session, we were provided updates throughout the weeks. But beyond that, they are extremely proactive and in touch with what's happening in Flagler County. I can often, and I often do, pick up the phone or text or call and say, hey, I have a question for you. But I appreciate the proactive approach that they go to what is happening here in Flagler County. If they hear something, read of something, see of something, they're always in touch with us at the district level to ensure that we're always in the right position to do what is best for our students. And so I will be asking for a renewal of their contract on May twenty-first.
And if you look in their contract on pages three and four, they have outlined everything they will be doing starting July first through June thirtieth. It is a lot of work and I too pick up the phone or email them as often as I need to. It is instrumental during the season for just understanding the budget and where you're going to pull out with the first calc. So I I'm very impressed and they help out and not just finance, but in many, many different areas.
Yeah, and provide updates to our staff. They will be doing an update on May thirty-first, I think it is, or May thirtieth, somewhere around there. They will come in and provide an update to staff on the legislative session in order to ensure, one, that everybody's on the same page where we need to be so that we can move forward with ensuring that we're in compliance as changes roll around for July one.
Right, that's good feedback, glad to know staff feels that way. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for traveling here.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks for making the journey. Okay, so now we will move on to number eight, technology innovation. Mr. Ryan Deese, welcome.
Good afternoon, Board Superintendent Moore. We bring to you a request to attend the ISTI conference. This year it is in Denver, Colorado. We have identified funding through digital classrooms dollars to allow us to do this. ISTI, if you're not familiar with it, is the International Society for Technology and Education. It is one of the largest instructional technology organizations in the country and really internationally. They help districts kind of navigate through what the latest technology is and what the impacts are on our classrooms and on our students and also help us kind of continue to move Flagler forward and continue to have the opportunities for our students around technology. So really this that we've brought before you is for six staff members to fly to Denver. It is over the summer. Do you have any questions?
No, it's all covered.
So no questions on that one?
That's good.
Perfect, thank you.
That's easy.
All right, so eight point zero two.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Amelia Fulmer just to join me briefly for this one. And really, this is being brought to you as an opportunity to piggyback off of the St. John's County contract. We've worked through with multiple vendors and a couple others to identify this opportunity for for the district. The the actual request is to approve the the use of this piggyback from St. John's County, but the the intention and what we plan to initially purchase through this is an updated sound system for the Flagler Auditorium. So Amelia has worked with her board extensively over the last really year and a half to two years to identify funds within the auditorium governing board to allocate towards improving the capital systems that are in place within the auditorium. So the funding for this project will actually be half from Flagler County Schools and half from the auditorium governing board. So we thought this was a great opportunity to highlight this and bring this to your attention as we continue to work very closely with the auditorium governing board. The the purchase is updating sound equipment that is approaching.
Our speakers are about twenty-two years old too, so.
So we've done quite a bit of updating and things around those, but it's it's really time. We've identified what we agree to be a very impactful solution for both the auditorium from a professional standpoint and the auditorium governing board, but a great opportunity for for our students to have some hands on with the high level equipment that you would see in a in a professional auditorium.
To continue to provide quality performances for our students, but also to give the students opportunities to train on that equipment. We have a lot of students that are already certified in the D-LIFE. Actually, our audio technician that we have now working at the auditorium trained here in Flagler Schools and got his certification on our equipment. And the other, the last one would be in compliance for the riders for the pro shows because when we bring the professional shows, they have a certain expectation to come and that's kind of our, the moneymaker for this, how we're able to fund it. So it's a threefold process.
So any questions?
Just a statement that they're sorely needed. I mean, just listening to, didn't one of the professional groups bring in their own sound system that was the level of this and it was.
We've had to do some tweaking.
Improve the difference in the sound.
We've had to do some tweaking over the year.
Yeah, it was incredible.
And we're losing some of the bottom frequencies, so it can tend to hurt your ears a little bit sometimes if you're trying to bring it up. So it's, the new technology, you know, technology moves fast and in twenty-two years, it's come a long way.
Yeah, it's changed.
Yeah, I'd say quite a bit.
Yes.
Well, there's no doubt that the sound is a big part of any performance and the experience that you get out of it. So, I mean, twenty-two years, that's a long time. I think we've gotten our life, our money out of those speakers and mixers and everything else.
What's the timeframe approximately, do you know, if we, when we.
We've worked with the with Amelia and her team to identify some time windows. This is not equipment that you would find on the shelf at, you know, Guitar Center. So they are generally in manufacturing and will be identified in what, you know, where that is in that process. So we do anticipate some time in between for getting the equipment onsite. So we have some windows identified that would meet the requirements of the vendor for when we can get those installed.
So would we be before the start of the next season?
That's the intention.
Okay, that's the key.
A handful of.
Yeah, and construction will be done over there at that point, so that would be helpful.
So this is the complete proposal here that's in board docs?
Correct.
Okay, so the total project, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents, of which two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven twenty-one is equipment, labor fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty, twenty dollars, and hardware miscellaneous twelve thousand, two sixty point nine four.
Correct.
Very good.
That's all new wiring, new.
Got the turnkey, we're ready to go as soon as they're done.
Yeah.
For another twenty-two years?
Hopefully.
Or more.
I think, I think, I think we're looking at fifteen, you know, ten to fifteen.
I'm sure we'll get the maximum life out of it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, thank you both. Appreciate your time. Okay, so we will now move on to nine, academic services. First, Mr. John Finelli, nine point zero one, code of student conduct timeline. Officer, Mr. Finelli.
Good afternoon, Chairman Firth, School Board Superintendent Moore. Hope everybody is doing well this afternoon. Just want to update you on where we are in the process of gathering feedback and revisions to student code. I did provide in the in the workshop agenda, two recommended codes for next year. The goal will be to ask for permission to advertise at the February twenty-first board meeting.
May.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, May twenty-first board meeting. And but we still have two months that we can add, tweak, change in between there with a final student of conduct hopefully being adopted in July, July twenty-third at the board meeting. You can see all of the different meetings and advertisements seeking feedback and input into our student code of conduct. We've had eighty specific feedbacks through our link, through our website. Forty-five percent of those are parents, thirty-six percent faculty and staff members. We've also had community members, students, admin. So it's been a pretty diverse group of feedback that we've received. Of that, you can see the breakdown for elementary, secondary, and both. It's split pretty equally. And then what the focus of the feedback was. So you could see about forty-two percent was discipline, thirty percent was dress code, ten percent attendance, and then it kind of splits off from there. So what I what I did here was I kind of outlined some of the changes. I'll go through them quickly, but feel free to stop me and ask any questions that you may have. We are looking to remove middle school footwear. There was an elementary, a middle, and a high school footwear. We're looking to split that between elementary and secondary. So we would do away with the middle school. The only difference is that middle school students would be allowed to wear flip flops or what they often refer to as slacks. So that was the only difference. It was something that admin and deans and teachers, it was something that was, really didn't have an impact on them during the day, except for that if they were getting disciplined for it, it was taking them away from learning. So there was no other impact to them regarding their classes or anything like that. I know in elementary school, all kids have PE and it becomes an issue or at recess. Sometimes that footwear ends up on the roof or on the overhang and it becomes an issue. So we would look to split it from three down to two and just do a six twelve. The next one is a request to remove pajamas, shall not be worn as clothing on campus. Looking at dress codes from several different districts, most of the districts did not separately single out pajamas. They have specific language around appropriate upper and lower attire, and as long as it meets those upper and lower attire requirements, they don't separate out, separate out whether it's athletic wear, whether it's sweatpants or dress pants or corduroys or jeans or pajama pants or whatever it is. So in in order to, again, maximize instructional time and remove punitive consequences that really didn't have an impact on learning, we're asking that we remove the pajama designation. Moving along, multidisciplinary team. One of the the team members that was listed in the student code was Department of Juvenile Justice. Our multidisciplinary team is made up of all Flagler County Schools employees. So we don't have anybody on that committee that isn't a representative of Flagler County Schools, making decisions for Flagler County Schools. So that doesn't mean that the Department of Juvenile Justice couldn't be involved in providing information or being there if a student is on probation or to support a youth. They just would not have any decision-making authority in our decisions on behalf of Flagler Schools. We're looking to add a code for elementary theft or minor theft for elementary students. So a lot of times in elementary schools, students may take things that don't belong to them because they see them and they like them. We only had higher level theft codes, so we didn't want to suspend a student out of school if maybe they took a pencil or something that didn't belong to them. We want to be able to address it, address it with the parent, but have a code that would allow them to remain on campus and learn from their mistakes. Cheating plagiarism, there's been a lot of discussion around AI and the advancements with AI in society and in learning specifically. So we are looking to remove the cheating and plagiarism code and replace it with academic dishonesty, which includes some of the language around AI and just kind of changing with the times. So in years past, it may be a student writing answers on their hand or looking on somebody else's paper. Well, that's not how cheating is done anymore. Now it's done through watches and devices and technology and AI. So we got to keep up with the times and it was time to move away from a cheating and plagiarism code and look at academic dishonesty. Skipping class, a recommendation is being brought forth to change the skipping class time designation from ten minutes after the bell to five minutes. So students have approximately five minutes to transition between bell to bell from class to class. They have an additional five minutes to where they would just be marked tardy. After ten minutes of class time has expired, if they come into that class after ten minutes of the class being in progress, then they would be marked as skipping. Well, actually, it would be five minutes because it's five minutes for transition and then five minutes of class time.
And we clearly have made that, evaluated that's a reasonable amount of time for them to, all students to get to their classes.
So that five minutes is more than enough time for any student to transition from classroom to classroom on any campus. Our admin have actually walked that with students to show them that it's possible. Beyond that five minutes, they have an additional five minutes that all they would get is a tardy. There are no consequences for getting a tardy until they accumulate five in one class. So if there's a day where they may get stuck in the bathroom or they may forget something in their other class and have to run back and grab it, there's no consequence beyond the fact that they would get a tardy for being late to that class within an additional five minutes. Testing misconduct, again, we've updated that language.
Mr. Phnom?
Yes?
Hey, just real quick before we move on from that, because Sheriff Furry, John and I spent actually kind of a long time talking about that piece. Can you speak a little bit more of the things that you shared with me on like the nuances of that? Because we talked about like if a student needed a little bit more time for a bathroom break, for instance, it's like you said, they could ask the teacher at the beginning of class or at the end of class, but then you said that you really don't want students like in the halls. Can you, can you just kind of share some of the details around what we talked about?
So I could speak to that. What what our admin and our teams on campus try to do is within that five minutes after the bell, they want all students to be in their classroom so they can clear the hallways and know that everybody's where they're supposed to be. So they do ask that during the first ten minutes of class and the last ten minutes of class, that students remain in their classroom so they can clear the hallways and not be giving passes to use the bathroom. But exceptions can be made. So if there is a student that needs to to use the restroom and they know that it's going to take them longer than the time to get to class, if they go to their class and work with their teacher, their teacher will work with them to not consequence them for the behavior and let them go to the bathroom. We want to be reasonable with all of our codes, right? We want students who need to go to the restroom to be able to use the restroom, student that needs to see the nurse to be able to see the nurse. So our goal is not to consequence students that are trying to do the right thing but may have a medical or a bathroom need, but we also want students to be to class on time and we want to honor that instructional time of the teachers. The teachers work hard to plan their lessons and we want to make sure that students are in there working from bell to bell. So we want kids in there and doing what they're supposed to. Our teachers will work with our students if there is an emergency or an issue where a student does need to use the restroom and it may go beyond the time that they're allotted, they can work with their teacher to do that. They just need to articulate that to the teacher in advance, not come to the class twenty minutes late and then try and explain where they were or what was going on. So for testing misconduct, again, changing cheating plagiarism to academic dishonesty. We also added that examples of testing misconduct would include, but are not limited to having a cell phone out during testing or other wireless communication devices. So there was talk about watches, there was talk about earbuds. None of those things are allowed during an assessment or testing situation. Hit strike, we are always continuing to make sure that we are accurately and appropriately coding behaviors on campus. So there are certain behaviors known as CSERS that are required to be reported to the state. Those are major incidents on campus that usually come with either an injury or come with law enforcement involvement. So in order to delineate or distinguish between what is a local code for hit strike on campus and simple battery, which is a state reported code, we wanted to add some additional language to clarify for our deans what does need to be reported and what can remain as a local code. And the way we did that was to add some language to. And the way we did that was to add some language to that code that says that that particular offense did not require law enforcement involvement. So there are two things for it to remain a local code. It's without injury and it did not require law enforcement involvement. If either one of those occurred, that would then push it from a locally-reported offense to a state-required reporting offense. So we're adding that language. We're looking to remove the planned fight language because a fight on campus is a fight on campus and will be disciplined as such. We're going to have one penalty for a local fight code on campus and one for a state-reported CSER fight code and not muddy the waters with the third code. So a fight is a fight. We are looking to add a code for a violation of safety drill procedures. Our safety is utmost to everything. It's paramount to all we do in the district. We want to ensure the safety of all students every day. And part of that is having drills that are done accurately and appropriately. And if there are students that in any way disrupt that drill or do not follow the required order of that drill, they could be disciplined as such. Transportation. This was an ask specifically from our transportation department. And this is specific to elementary only. They did ask that personal electronic devices not be used on the buses. So I know there was some talk around that. And we know that sometimes our buses are running late or sometimes there's a need for a student to reach out to the parent. So we wrote the language as such. Do not use personal electronic devices without advanced permission from the driver. So if the student asks the driver, hey, can I call my mom? I need to let her know we're running late. Or the driver says, hey, if you have a cell phone and you want to let your parent know that you're running late, go ahead and do so. So they're not to use electronic devices unless they have advanced permission from the driver on the bus. And this would be specific to elementary only.
And how would that look? So say somebody's in the back of the, very back of the bus. How are they going to communicate that? Is that kind of been thought through?
So they can let the driver know upon entry onto the bus. Or the driver can let the students know that if the bus is running late before they run that route, hey, guys, if you have a phone and you need to let your parent know that the bus is running late. If there was another situation, they would have to ask the driver. My hopes would be that they wouldn't have to interrupt the driver while he's operating the bus to ask for permission.
So it's more of a proactive, the driver actually realizing a situation where the student might need to communicate and give that permission upfront.
Yes, and that will be a training issue on our end. So at the beginning of the year, I meet with all the drivers and I train them on the rules and regulations of our student code and any changes that remain. So that will be upon me to train our drivers. And if the bus is running late, please allow your students the permission to contact their parent and let them know that the bus is running behind. Or if there's a specific issue with a student on the bus or a concern, you know, then they just, the student would need to let the driver know, I need to contact my parent regarding this issue. So we are also, again, looking to remove. There is a cheating plagiarism section to the student code of conduct. We are looking to remove that cheating plagiarism section with academic integrity and dishonesty policy. This policy was created by our AI task force that has been created as a district to look at policies and changes to cheating and plagiarism and the use of AI in the classroom. Because we know it is going to be used in different ways. We want to make sure that it's used in positive ways that supports the learning of students.
Hey, John?
Yes?
Hey, real quick before you move on, I'm sorry I didn't catch you. For the benefit of the public, again, I just want to go over something you and I talked about privately regarding the bus. For some reason, I thought that there were aids on the buses. And I learned from John that there are not aids on the buses. There is a bus driver who is operating a large vehicle and responsible for all of the students. And so I think, again, for just the benefit of parents and the benefit of the public, to me, after John explained it, it was very much a kind of a safety issue that we limit the devices because they, for that grade level, are proving to be very disruptive. So John, I don't know if you can probably articulate that better than me, but that's something that we talked about last time. I just think it's really important for parents to kind of understand where that's coming from.
So you are correct. Not all of our buses have aids. Some do have aids if they're necessary. And that's driven based off of the needs of the students on the bus. So we do have buses that have aids, but we do have buses that don't have aids. We know that students, especially in elementary school sometimes, when they are unsupervised and on technology, they're not making the best decisions. And I know it has created a lot of issues for the drivers with students inappropriately using technology on the elementary buses because they're unsupervised. So because of that, the drivers and transportation department for elementary has asked that cell phones be off and away while on the bus unless they have prior permission from the driver. And that's where that came from. It came from students just not appropriately using devices and being unsupervised in doing so. So the academic integrity policy would replace the cheating and plagiarism policy. And then the last piece is something that's still in progress because it's a district-wide collaboration across many departments. So we are looking at makeup work and looking at creating a policy around when there is an excused absence, is the work allowed to be made up within how many days? So I'll be working with teaching and learning and our academic leadership team to discuss makeup work policies around out-of-school suspension and around excused absences. Right now, it says that the decision will be made with the school and the teacher. But that necessarily could mean that, you know, a student in middle or high school that has multiple teachers could have to adhere to varying policies around the, you know, how many days they have to make up the work. So we want to kind of standardize that. So everybody knows if you're out for a day, you've got a day to make it up or two days to make it up. So we're going to work as an academic leadership team with teaching and learning to standardize that language in our district. That is where we're at right now. Like I said, we still have two months from the date that we're advertising, basically, to make revisions and updates and changes. So there may be some tweaks and some changes as we go along. But those are the main tenants of what we are presenting. I do want to share with you that I've had conversations with all of our leaders across the district, as well as our deans. And I have reviewed all 80 comments that have come in regarding the student code of conduct. And what we present to you today, we have reached consensus on across our district. Any questions? All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 9.02, science instructional materials. Mr. Reeves?
Good afternoon, Mr. Furry, board members, superintendent Moore. Got a few items for you today. The first is our thoughts regarding our science materials and adoption. As you know, this process began in October. Our timeline's posted. With teams of teachers, admin, parents attending NEFEX Publishers Fair and narrowing down our choices, it continues with some materials being delivered to schools for feedback and collections from teachers and administrators. We had instruction material committee participate in publisher presentations in December, giving publishers the opportunity to share the products with teachers, parents, and administrators. The public also had an opportunity to view the materials digitally or in the teaching and learning office from January 29th to February 17th. And I'm pleased to tell you we had from teachers and staff 586 rubrics completed for input. That is the most we've ever had participation from our staff engaging the process for reviewing materials. So that was very helpful. From our website, we had about 16 hits from the community. And that's a decent portion for that. And what we're presenting to you today is two items or two lists, I should say. We still have not received from DOE the final list of approved materials, but all the materials are on the list to be chosen from. And so we're talking about, I have it on the document for you up there. It's choice one and choice two. And what a number of districts around the state are doing now at this point are they are adopting these recommendations as a whole. And then based on how they come out, we'll align ourselves with our one or number two options. But they've all been approved through our staff and through our work for that.
Did we make this review public this year? Because I remember seeing it last year.
Every year, yes, ma'am. Yeah, January 29th through the 17th of February, it was a public review. In addition, we have parents involved in the process with us going to see the publishers of NEFEX as well as in December with us here at GSB.
Was it online that you could get to it?
Both. You could do it online as well as face-to-face in the teaching and learning department.
The books that we have in column one and two, when might we expect to see the states?
That's a great question.
Because I assume you want these for the start of school?
That is correct. We're looking to move forward with that. We have had some folks have been in touch with Dr. Brown and trying to get some direction from DOE. We're told it's coming soon. And so we're presenting to you guys this way. The hope would be by our May 21st date that we'll have finalized that information. If you look in particular at the biology, EAS, it's environmental science. We're working closely with both high schools to ensure that we have alignment and not picking two different resources. And so we're still finalizing that process. But either one's going to be one and the other's two or the other one's one and the other's two. But it'll be those two items.
All righty.
All right, so we can move on to 9.03, capturing kids' hearts.
Absolutely. So this is our third summer of a rollout. It began summer of 2022. And we've had hundreds of teachers and parents that have been trained in this. We've offered this to the board as well. I can extend it again for this summer as well. But it is a great foundational piece that addresses tier-one supports. It provides a framework for our students and our staff to understand character building, resiliency, and coming together to help celebrate those items. And so the superintendent requested that we continue this training this summer. We're utilizing our ESSER funds to kind of exhaust those funds for that. And we have 200 spots that are coming open for this summer for that. And it just strengthens campus life is what it does for you. And before you is that quote for us from the proposal.
I took the training last summer and I highly recommend taking it. It gives you a better perspective of the classroom and how to react in the classroom and what the teachers are doing and how their staff's reacting. You know, it gives the kids purpose and it is excellent training. Excellent training. It's interesting. I think you'd enjoy it.
It's a great framework.
It is.
Any questions for that feedback? I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, so we can move on to 9.04.
All right.
Overnight travel consent.
Travel. The first one I'm going to share with you is from Buddy Taylor. Sea Purge. Not know if you've ever heard of that or not, but it is a STEM program. It is exceptional. And I am pleased to tell you that we have a team going from Buddy Taylor to Maryland to present their project and compete internationally in College Park. It's May 30th to June 2nd. And it is an exceptional opportunity. And our students get exposed to this, people from all over the country and the world to see these different projects. Oftentimes, it's robotics in the water. So it really challenges them in their thinking. The last travel item I have for you is out-of-state travel as well. It's for staff. This is in particular for Matanzas High School. There's two staff members that they are sending to a PLC training with Solution Tree. This in addition to the district funding that we're doing to send staff in September. We talked about the last meeting. And excited about this. This just expands Matanzas High School's strength and their leadership team in supporting Solution Tree and professional learning communities on their campus.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move on to number 10, operational services. We'll go to 10.02, adoption of proposed student generation. Mr. Whitson.
Chairman Furry, members of the board, superintendent Moore. This is not the first time you've seen this. We are prepared to answer any questions you all might have this afternoon about this. And as you know, we use the numbers generated out of this study in our proportionate share mitigation agreements that come before you for review based on the rooftops and the units proposed in the developments. Be glad to answer any questions unless you want to go into any further detail.
There were no changes since the last time it was presented to you.
Yeah, just looking through the.
The best slide is the last one, which kind of captures the difference between 2021 when we adopted the rate that's currently in use versus this one. It's very minute changes and nothing's changed since we discussed it last time with you.
I hadn't realized originally that townhouses were considered single-family dwellings. They're like four and five together. And they're not multiple. Oh, that's interesting.
So that multi-family is just more like a duplex?
Condos.
Because a condo wouldn't be considered, would that be considered under the multi-family?
It could be, but mainly the difference with the townhomes is it's considered single-family the way the cities and the jurisdictions count it. It's only multi-family if there's like a third unit. Like so a duplex is counted as, you know, a single family. And then if it has a third unit, then it's multi-family.
Because that's how they're building the townhouses today.
We're counting them the way, we have the working group with the jurisdictions each having participants in there. And that's how they want to count it. So we were like, fine, we could adopt the model.
So in a different municipality, different county, they could be classified differently. But this is just how we, our county.
Yes, sir. The jurisdictions in Flagler.
Okay. Very good. If there are no other questions, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, number 11, human resources.
So 11.01 is our standard order personnel items. As you guys are aware, it will continue to change up until the May 21st board meeting.
And I guess the only thing I would add with that is we'll be recognizing our retirees at that board meeting and a reception just prior to. So more to come on that one.
Joanna Davis, that's a long time employee.
Several.
Yeah, there are a couple of it. I don't know what they're going to do with Pfeffet Dave. Who's going to step in there? Because she's just been it forever that I can remember. So that's interesting to see. And we also have a new employee, which is somebody I've worked with for years. And she's here today. Carrie Anderson has now joined us, which is nice to have her here. And she'll be taking over all the special events and activities. So she comes from Powell. She used to be at work with Powell and now she's with us. That was a good change.
Excited to have her.
Yes, very excited. Very excited.
Absolutely. So that's 11.1, work in progress. But, you know, recognition is to come at the board meeting.
Very good. So 11.02, job description.
Yes, and we have four, excuse me, five different job descriptions this time. A couple of them are just some minor cleanups. The school psychologist, there was a change in credentials to clarify what the credentials required would be. And that really is the only change there. And that was in consultation with the director of ESC and the school psychologist. The coordinator of student behavior and conduct management, there were some changes to realign the org chart for student services and to kind of clarify the job description as well. It also helps move that position to its correct alignment in an administrative role. In addition to that, we have the part-time at-will swim instructor. Previously, we had hired our summer swim instructors just under lifeguards. That was an error and we have corrected that because these are definitely more than just lifeguards. They're not, diminish our lifeguards. They're awesome, but I mean, saving you from in the pool and teaching you how to stay in the pool are a couple of different things. The last two job descriptions are administrators on assignment. This is, there's administrator on assignment, 12-month position, operations administrator assignment. These are new job descriptions. They're meant to help bolster our succession planning within the administrative ranks, allow us to, a little more flexibility within the organization to hire our entry-level administrators with flexibility that they could be moved during the course of the year as needs arise. So these two job descriptions reflect, I think, some good discussions with senior staff. And I think that will be useful in the future as far as with our succession planning and growing our own administrators. planning and growing, growing our own administrators from teacher leaders through to principals and beyond.
I have a question. We've always had administrators on assignment. They never had a job description for them before?
This one's a little bit different. This one more is in the line of the assistant principal lane, whereas an administrator on assignment, a lot of times...
Could be anything.
Could be anything.
Yes.
This right here is really aligned to the credentials of what an assistant principal would be. So, our goal is looking at initial teacher leaders or existing assistant principals to stretch their knowledge. For example, let's just, what if they're currently a director level position in my office? That's vacant. This could, in theory, be filled by an assistant principal on assignment from a currently sitting assistant principal or a teacher leader. They would gain the knowledge of district policy procedures, at the same time understand the HR role. At the end of a year, two-year different tour of duty, they could head back to a school as an assistant principal and take the depth of the knowledge they've gained with them in the process. We could also use these kind of positions in other departments, for example, Transportation or even the VPK spot, where it would be, you would take a person with the educator knowledge, the leadership, credentials and certification, allow them to grow and add to the existing knowledge of that department, and then in turn, take that back to the school.
My concern is that these are two new administrative positions. That's going to be a minimal of $70,000 each. That's the low end of each of those pay scales. Okay, so that's the minimum it could be. I don't want to see us as an organization our size to be so top-heavy. I have concerns.
These aren't new positions that we're adding to the chart. These are job descriptions that we're, one, we're adding the operational administrator on assignment job description as well as this administrator on assignment job description. So, we're not adding any positions, but these job descriptions give us the opportunity to have a job description or field positions in the example that Mr. Wulek used with positions that may not be at the director level position. So, we're not adding any additional positions at this point. This is bringing on job descriptions so that in the event, as we look at the organization and we position people where they need to be in order to serve the organization and serve our students, this is a job description that should be available. We have people sitting in this spot that do not currently have a clean job description of their role.
Right, right.
Such as...
Admin, yes.
Our VPK, our person that's over VPK, you know, and so we have to have the job description to align with what the work and the duties are. So, right now, we're not adding any jobs.
And should you add individuals that would go through the board prior?
Should we add...
Say you, somebody, you think somebody needs an administrative position there. Would you come, for that person to come through the board first?
Well...
Because what I don't want to see is, is that being used and then all these additional people being moved all over the place and adding to our bottom line. That's my concern.
This isn't, this isn't adding to our bottom line. This gives the organization and gives me an opportunity to organize the district in the best way in order to be able to serve. There are positions that we have not fielded, and we haven't fielded, that we could field in a position like an administrator on assignment that would allow for our current workforce to have access to that position, learn, grow, and develop, and potentially take on more permanent positions such as an assistant principal or a principal. Right now, there is no opportunity for succession planning or growing our own versus putting individuals in permanent administrator positions.
Okay, how does that fit though for plant management operations? I understand pretty much the assistant principal piece of it, how it could help. Why can't we just put it all under one umbrella and have, you know...
Qualifications are different.
Well, you could separate them in the job description, but they'd be administrative assistants to have two separate job descriptions.
That's exactly, the goal was, just because sometimes in the ops section, the credentials and the experience don't always, there are such requirements from the Department of Education when you go on the academic side of the house as far as credentialism. And whereas you have more flexibility to value experience in lieu of some credentials. So, that's why we actually, the ops administrator on assignment gave more of that flexibility to value the experience and not as strictly adhering to the credentials piece that's required by the academic side.
And we post the positions. We want to be able to post and be very clear and clean in what the position is. So, if we were to take these two positions and combine them into one, that's going to be very muddy as to what the qualifications are. However, if I'm posting a position and it is an academic administrator on assignment, here are the qualifications that you have to have. These are the qualifications that we're going to be looking at in order to interview versus if this is a position where we're looking at an operational administrator on assignment, this, these are the qualifications that you need to have. Right now, we have not had, we have not had the ability to, we have not had that, that opportunity within the organization.
So, there's a financial impact. That's, that's the concern that I had. If you take somebody who's currently an administrator or even a teacher that you want to become an administrator, train them, you're taking them out of position, and that position has to be filled that they just vacated. So, there will be some financial, it has to be.
There will be financial impacts if we were to bring on additional positions. But the financial impact is already there if the, any positions that we currently have that are already professional level positions are filled with this, with one of these job roles. The impact of the plan or the budget for that is already there because it's already a position that we have online.
My biggest thing is I don't want our staff to come back to us and say, look how top-heavy we are becoming. And, I mean, we're a small district by far. I mean, we're not, both North and South of us are very large districts, you know, and I just, I get concerned when I see us adding administrative positions when I know we've got staff. That's my concern.
Absolutely. And I think what I guess we need to do better job communicating is that we're not looking at, at adding a position alongside of an existing like director position, for example. When you advertise for a director position, you know, these are usually people at the principal level looking at their, their post-school-based level, you know, career path. What we're trying to do is align ourselves with some of the big districts as far as their leadership pipelines. We want to have more of our early-career administrators to have some central office experience, to have some experience within different departments so that when they move back to a school-based or they go to the school-based as a first time as administrator, they have a broader view of the organization. And, you know, you go, you go to the larger districts and they are, they're able to accomplish that through their leadership pipelines. And we don't necessarily have the space and capacity at our, at our leadership level without doing exactly what you said, which would be adding a top-heavy layer that would be redundant.
Right, right. Trying to avoid, right.
Yeah. So, that's why we're trying to do it through some strategic placements, quite honestly, looking at quite seriously the, the current director position we have in HR. That's vacant. So, we wouldn't be adding that position plus a teacher on assignment. It'd be one or the other.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to 11.03, Special Leave Application.
This is just a general special leave application. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to share. The only thing particular about this is in alignment with school board policy. This does require a special board approval because the employee will be taking leave of absence, but will be seeking a, a paid position in that, in that stead before that person returns.
We will be saving that position or just a position?
We are saving a position at, at that qualification level, but not exactly that.
Yeah, I kind of figured that. I just wanted to make sure. Morocco.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Alright, so now we'll, we're going to need you to stay, Bob, because we're going to Human Resource Service, Action, 18.
Yes, 18-1, 18-2, and 18-3 are separate but are definitely companion. That's why the attachment in 18-2 is really also a companion attachment for 18-1 in that the first piece of this puzzle is the Insurance Committee's recommendations. We brought to you the recommendations in past meetings. Just to kind of recap, it was the Insurance Committee's recommendation that action be taken on our new slate of vendors for our health insurance. And the changes include the replacement of Quantum with Communitas. And we had had that discussion that is both a cost savings and what we thought was a move, an efficiency move. Then there was also a minor change in our vision plan. We're actually, you'll be getting the option to getting another pair of classes in a, in a more timely manner within the plan. And then the last piece is we will be moving from what we call as PlanSource, which is a, a company under the umbrella of Brown and Brown, to Winston, which will allow us to do open enrollment and our benefits uploads more efficiently. Those are the only changes as far as our slate of vendors for next year, and that would be 18-1.
Very good. That was 18-01?
Yeah, and if you had any questions about anything, I've moved on to 18-2. 18-2 is basically the discussions that have been had regarding the premiums and the rate structure. And this, once again, was brought together as the three-part companion because the rate structure and the premiums are influenced directly by, which would be number three in there, would the Insurance Committee's recommendation regarding a clinic or a healthcare, a health clinic. The most recent upload is lacking the month of March. That will be added in time for the board meeting.
Okay. So, any questions between 18-01 and 18-03?
Probably just to clarify for everybody that we've talked this out early.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion around this, these items here. Anything else to add here?
No, I will make sure the next time that we are here, I will, you have Danielle from Brown and Brown with me to make sure that we have our most recent numbers and any updates or questions that you have at the time.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Ried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to 21, Public Comments. Has anybody signed up for, has anybody signed up for public comment? Would anybody like to come forward?
Can you please make sure that you sign in before you leave, please? Yes, that is standard for, for public comments.
Thank you, board members and superintendent. My name is Carrie Purdy. I have sent a business plan to each of you for the review, requesting an agenda item to be made to allow fluid to assume control of the Belt Air Swim and Rocket Club. We feel that we are able to run the facility with full swim lessons, proper management, and allow for use as well as a gym, use of the tennis courts, and provide a lot of community service for the kids to come into. We've been formulating a lot of ideas for middle school kids to come over using the facility after school, provide swim lessons as much as we can, otherwise with the new implemented heater, thank you, and pool covers. We should be able to have more opportunities to provide the swim lessons to year-round students for kids in the community. This is Water Safety Month, and it's important to address and maybe follow through with kids second grade to come over and utilize that pool and to give free swim lessons to those kids needed over the summers and provide free lessons, safety, as well as for this, for, we're gearing most, our plan is to gear most of the facility towards the students, but also have applicable times for the community. I know that your reasoning recently is to eliminate any kind of memberships for community, but while the kids are in school, they're not going to be utilizing it. So, opportunities for us to take over with aqua aerobics and other opportunities in the gym and other pool-based utilizations are going to be welcome during that time. But our plan is to, after school starts, from that point in time on, it will be most likely closed for school activities and students to be able to utilize that facility much better. So, currently, that's what we have planned to start. FTI would not have utilization to use for swim lessons. That would be on our end to teach those as well as any kind of aquatic programs. We would like to facilitate all that use.
Alright, thank you. Very appreciate it.
Timing.
Okay, seeing there are no other public comment, we will close public comment and move on to board member requests.
I have one. It goes back to the, the job descriptions. Can you get for us in the near future, all of us, a copy of the upload chart of our, how our setup?
Org chart?
Yes, the org chart. Because I'm sure it could be very beneficial for everybody to see that, how it works and relies on, because I don't think our new members have seen it. I saw it when it first came out. That was a while ago. So, there might even be some changes to it. I don't think there is, though. Yeah, that would be good for us all to see and understand. That would be helpful. That's all.
I don't have anything.
We do have one topic that was on there. I just want to make sure that we, the security coverage, we cover that next for, after new topics. Chair for 22.02, that was one of the board member requests was for us to discuss here at these workshops.
Okay, yes. Okay, 22.02.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I've brought that forward and we can do it after. Any new requests that, you know, the board may have? So, I'm sorry to interrupt your new requests.
Okay, no worries. Yeah, we definitely will address that there. So, I do have a board member request. I met with Commissioner Sarah Arnold with the St. Johns County Commission, and she's, she's the chair, and right now, she's been spearheading the effort to, to win the, the location for St. Johns County for the Florida Museum of Black History. And it's come down to just a, a couple handful of counties left, and they have a really good shot at, at getting this funding to, to build this. And she met, she wanted to meet, to gain our support as, as a, from an educational perspective. And with the, with the board's wishes, I'd like to direct staff to write a letter of recommendation supporting that location for this museum and just highlighting how we can use that to advance academics in Black history through field trips and other interactions with the, with that museum. Does ever, does anybody have anything to, to add to that?
Yeah. Gosh, it was at least, it could have been a year, year and a half ago that that was presented, not to the board, but I, I think it might have been a Carver Foundation meeting because it was, it's such a big deal to have that placed somewhere where people can get to. And at that time, they were still talking about pushing St. Augustine. As I understand it now, it is like down to two locations, and St. Augustine is one of them. And it, they're actually favoring St. Augustine. So, I think it's a great idea. I love the type of...
And I think regionally, it can support Duval County, Flagler, and all surrounding.
Or, everybody.
Right, so it, it would be a great location. So, if everybody's okay with that, like us to write a letter of support for that. Okay. I'd like us to write a letter of support for that. Okay.
Chair Furry, is there anything that you need from us individually, or are you on top of it?
Well, we're just, we're going to be sending a collective support letter. Of course, you're welcome to write a letter of support on your own if you'd like from your district seat. That's totally, would only enhance their packet, I'm sure. But we will be sending something collectively as a board and a district to support.
Great. Thank you.
Also, if you check, you may have received that I did send, had Superintendent Moore send you some links that have the full proposal and the letters of recommendations of other municipalities and organizations that have sent in their support, including the City of Palm Coast. And I believe the county commission, but I don't have a hundred percent confirmation on that. But I'm sure they wouldn't be against it. That'll be up to them. But, so, yeah, please check your email for some more information on that. Any other board member requests? No? So, security coverage. Ms. Moore.
That was brought forward as a board member request for us to add it as a discussion to this, to an upcoming board meeting. And it's about our workshop currently, our workshops. Currently, we do have law enforcement available at each of our workshops, of course, at our board meetings. And so the conversation for this board is, will we continue to have law enforcement coverage at our workshops as well as our board meetings? Of course, we'll continue to have them at our board meetings, but do you, as a board, want to continue that or not? Was the request for the discussion.
What is the cost? Tommy, did he leave?
It depends on whether.
Yeah.
It varies.
Well, okay, to buy their rank.
So are you asking about having this conversation at a future meeting?
Well, no, the request was for it to be put on a future meeting. This is the future meeting.
Okay, so it is. Gotcha. I was just curious because it was under the board member request heading, so that's why it was a little confusing there. So if we're having that conversation, you know, the, this request was made by Ms. Hunt, and that has been, we agreed to do that at her request. So I'd like to maybe hear from you, Sally, on what are your thoughts here on the ongoing coverage here at our workshops?
So, this is, this is just really my, I guess I will just share my thoughts. Just in the time that I've been a board member, there have been some topics that have gotten a lot of emotion. And, you know, whether it's people being terminated from their jobs, you know, personally, I just, to me, that room in particular is not a safe space with one, you know, entry and one exit. So, I mean, I just, to keep, you know, elected people safe and everybody in the room, like, you know, whether it's finding a new location that would have some different, you know, exit points available. I just, you know, I would err on the side of caution. With that being said, you know, if I'm kind of the only person in the room who feels that way, then, you know, I can certainly make decisions for myself, you know, so that I always feel safe. But Chair Furry, that has just kind of been my view now for a little bit.
I know somebody mentioned just not having a deputy in case of a situation where there is like a hot topic. Then we can request them. I mean, because for the most part, we haven't had anything really dramatic going on, I feel like.
No, I agree with you. It's, I mean, even today, we have two from the public, you know, so we haven't had anybody. And it's expensive. Not that we don't like our SROs. We love you. But I'm not sure it's necessary here. It is necessary at night, at our night meetings. I fully understand it because we don't know who's coming and what the deal is. But I'm not sure we really need them at these workshops. That's my thoughts.
My position on it is that if it will, if it's going to be by request, that those requests come strictly from the board, you know, we as staff not being in a position to gauge which topics will be topics that will garner a lot of attention or not, that's not a place for staff to be in. That would be at the request of board members. I would also say, just as you are having this conversation, is, it is pricey, right, to have it. But when we look at safety and the safety measures that we take, we look at them not for what is happening, but just really that preventative measure to ensure that, you know, our staff and this board and our community are in a safe place.
Thank you.
We can also, I know that this has come up once before. We can look at doing a workshop in the chambers to allow for additional options. I know that the, this board has been invited to safety training for the chamber. And so we can definitely look at doing a workshop in the chamber so that we do have more options than a one entrance, one exit location. And so if you want us to stage that, we can do that and then bring this conversation back to you as a board.
Superintendent Moore, has this board ever done a workshop in the chamber? Because when that idea has come up before, it's, I think the comment, or at least one comment, has been that it would be too formal, or it would kind of lose the more informal energy that we enjoy with the workshop. I'm wondering if that's coming from an actual time where that's been done? Or is it possible to schedule a workshop in the chamber just to see how it goes?
I think it's important, regardless of what has happened, I think it's important that this board, if that is something that you're interested in, that we do it so that you see and then you have a voice on what that looks like and feels like versus us just having our meetings here because we've always had our meetings here.
I think it's worth a shot. I mean, it'd be worth trying and seeing how it goes.
I mean, I think the only complaint that I heard from people was the fact it's not as intimate. We don't have that, our staff is not, I mean, they'll be there, but they would have to come up to the mic or whatever. That's all.
I mean, I know we could make it work. We could make just about anything work. But there's no doubt that this is a better environment, in my opinion at least, with staff, but also with the public, especially when it's a public comment, you know, coming up to the table here. It's a little different than standing at the podium, and we're, you know, on the dais. And it's just, it's, this is a different experience. So I personally prefer this environment, and I feel we are more collaborative here. Staff is close by instead of way in the back of the room. But I think it's wonderful that everybody's willing to try something different. But personally, I think that this is a better environment. And when it comes to the, having an SRD here, then, you know, I really think it needs to be a unanimous decision on that. I think we're, we'd be okay without it at the workshops personally also. I haven't personally felt the need for it, but I do believe that if that is something that is affecting one board member, then we should honor that. So, but my view is that we would keep our workshops still in here. If that, if it meant to have the law enforcement presence, then I would say it'd be worth it. So, it's really, that's my view on this.
Hey, Chair Furry, if I can just, you know, comment on something that you said, and this is, it's just my opinion. But, you know, from my perspective, things are, you know, really nice and informal in that room and, you know, great conversation. And then I feel we go into the chamber, and it's, it's then so formal. And I think, I think there is a chance, maybe, that if the workshops were, at least sometimes held in the chamber, and those, and there was kind of the practice of that kind of informal collaborative discussion in the chamber, perhaps then during the business meetings, there'd be a chance that things would be perhaps the same, you know, more collaborative. That's something that I, as a board member, have kind of felt, things were maybe, that we were maybe, we've been missing, that on business meetings, I've wanted for there to be more conversation, more a body than just going through, you know, the Robert's Rules and the formality of everything. So I respect what everybody is saying. I think everybody is, you know, really comfortable in that room. I just, I think, I apologize. It's dinner time for my dog. But I do think that just trying it in the chamber, there could be some benefits to that.
Well, the one thing about the, our workshops is they are intended to have those discussions here so that when we do the business meeting, we can move through, especially our consent agenda relatively efficiently because we've actually had two meetings prior to those votes, right? And the, and I think that's been a very valuable setup that was, that had been in place before we even came on the board, and it seems to be working. If it is the will of the board as a majority here, I'm willing to try it if that's where we want to go. But personally, I think that this format works, and it has been working. We really have not had any incidents that we can directly see that has happened here. And so I think that, but if it meant having, continuing in this format and the, and having law enforcement would accomplish that, I think it's worth it if even one board member wants that peace of mind.
Sally, do you want to try a workshop downstairs in the chambers?
I mean, I think that'd be great, just to try it, super easy, just to move right on back if it just, you know, is a total no-go, but I think it'd be interesting to at least try it, yeah.
So are you saying that if we had it in the chambers, then we would not, we would not have an SRD in there for the workshops if we moved there? Is that what you're saying?
I would not find it necessary to have law enforcement if we were on the first floor in the chamber.
Don't we have a, we have a security guard downstairs, too?
Yeah, and then that's, Kristy, that's part of it, is, you know, we've got security just right outside the door, essentially.
Well, you know, personally, I think what we've got in place is efficient and working well. But, you know, it sounds like there may be some support for it, so if you want to try it.
I'd go either way. I mean, this doesn't bother me.
It doesn't hurt us to just try.
How about scheduling?
We'll schedule one for the, we'll schedule a workshop for the chamber. We will continue with our law enforcement until after that.
And, but we, do we know if we can still do it on Tuesdays as we have? Do we know if it's available?
When we first had this conversation, it was available, but Lorraine's giving me the look like, ah, she doesn't know. Let us get, let's look at that. Let's make sure.
Because that's, you know, we've all reserved Tuesday in our lifestyles, and changing the date could be problematic.
It could be, yes, yes.
So, okay. All right, thank you for everybody's input, and we will move on to closing comments.
Benny?
Just real quick, this morning I got to visit Step Up, which is our Adults with Disabilities program. And I just encourage all our board members to get out there. It was good just to, you know, set foot there and see what's going on there. And I'm confident that our staff, our operations are working on finding them a better facility, which is really needed. But it was good to just go and visit. And also just a reminder to the public, we, this is an election year. We have, I think, one district that only has one candidate as of right now. So there is availability on the school board. So if you're thinking about it, now's the time because qualifying is in June.
Thank you. Just want to thank staff and the public for your input. And also just wanted to give condolences to Pastor Daisy Henry, who just recently passed away, and she's been a real pillar of the community and has been greatly involved in this, with this board since I've been elected. And I got to know her quite a bit during that time, and really grateful for her efforts and just condolences to the community and to her family.
I attach myself to that for sure. It is Teacher and Employee Appreciation Week, so thank you so much to all of our faculty and our staff for all that they do each and every day for our students and for this community. It is graduation and promotion time of year, so lots of things happening. On our website, our community can go and see all of the different dates and times for the different promotion ceremonies that we have. Tonight and tomorrow, we will be out in the community giving out scholarships. We will start with Flagler Palm Coast High School tonight. So I'm going to leave here and go over there and award some scholarships to a few students. And then tomorrow, we will finalize that with Matanzas High School. And of course, we know graduation coming up on the 22nd, and we're really looking forward to that.
Green dress.
I got my green. I'm glad you noticed.
Green today, blue tomorrow.
And then I'll be in blue tomorrow. Absolutely.
Hey, Chair Furry, if I can just also add my condolences to the friends and family of Ms. Daisy. I was rather shocked to see the news. And then the only other thing that I wanted to add, because it was mentioned during the meeting about the district being, you know, perhaps top heavy or whatever. I just wanted to take a moment to share with the public that I did have a really great conversation with Superintendent Moore, and I very much trust that she is evaluating all positions. She has very much a short-term, long-term strategy. And so I know she is looking at, you know, she's looking at everything. And so I just wanted to share that. I don't think everybody's aware of the behind the scenes, but the more I get a little glimpse into the behind the scenes, I just, I have more and more trust in this person who's at the top of the district. So thank you, Superintendent Moore, for everything you're doing.
I will just add, though, it's always nice to trust, but you also should verify. Trust but verify.
All right, thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.